Okay, at 7:00 PM, I'd like to call the Tiffin City Council Meeting Tuesday, February 20th, 2024 to order. The invocation and pledge allegiance will be led by Councilmember Jones.
Let's clear a break, please. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for today and pray for many more tomorrows. We ask that you continue to watch over this body and all the great citizens of the city of Tiffin, and please continue to watch over our men and women serving overseas and abroad and hope that they come home safely. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands or the nation under God, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I will ask the clerk to call the roll, please.
Councilmember Jones?
Here.
Councilmember Reesner?
Here.
Councilmember Snae?
Here.
Councilmember Thacker?
Present.
Councilmember Hayes? Councilmember Herniman?
Here.
Councilmember Kaler?
Here.
Thank you. Let the record show six of the seven councilmembers are present. Minutes from February 5th, 2024, regular and committee at the whole meetings were distributed. Are there any questions, corrections, or deletions on those? The minutes will stand approved as presented. We are now under committee reports. Finance Committee, Councilmember Reesner.
No report, Madam President.
Thank you. Long Community Planning, Councilmember Kaler?
No report, Madam President.
Key Materials and Equipment, Councilmember Jones?
No report, Madam President.
Personnel and Labor Relations, anyone from that committee have a report to share?
I have a report, Madam President.
Awesome, thank you.
A meeting was held in city chambers on February 12th, 2024, starting at 5:21 PM. The purpose of this meeting was to discuss the mayor's request for legislation number 24-11, approval of city administrator as proxy for Seneca County General Health District meeting, and mayor's request for legislation number 24-12, appointment to the zoning board of appeals, and any other business to come before the committee. Attending were committee members John Hayes, Cheyenne Thacker, and John Kaler. Also attending were Mayor Lee Wilkinson, City Administrator Nick Dutrow, Law Director Zachary Fowler, and councilmembers Aaron Jones, Scott Herniman, and Dennis Snae. Councilman Hayes started the meeting by confirming that the mayor is sending a proxy to the Seneca County General Health District meeting due to a scheduling conflict on the date of March 18th. Mayor Wilkinson explained that he was requested to have a proxy voted on by city council. City Administrator Dutrow stated that the Health District Administration made this request. Thacker motioned to have the law director draft the legislation for Dutrow to be the proxy for the mayor. Kaler seconded the motion. The motion carried on a vote of three to zero. The committee then discussed the appointment to the zoning board of appeals. The mayor explained the reasoning for his selection, including the appointee's previous experience within the city and familiarity with zoning rules and regulations. Kaler motioned to accept the mayor's appointment. Thacker seconded. The motion carried on a vote of three to zero. The committee then discussed its options of how it may handle future appointments brought before the committee. With no other business to discuss, our meeting adjourned at 5:38 PM.
Thank you. Any questions? Thank you. Recreation and public property, Councilmember Snae?
I have a report, Madam President. A committee meeting was held in the Tiffin City Council Chambers on February 12th, 2024, starting at 5:15 PM. Its purpose was to review and discuss Mayor Wilkinson's request for legislation number 24-10 regarding an application for NOPEC energized community grant and any other business that may come before this committee. Attending were committee members Dennis Snae, Aaron Jones, and Scott Herniman. Additional guests attended were Mayor Wilkinson, Law Director Zachary Fowler, City Administrator Nick Dutrow, consulate large members John Kaler, Cheyenne Thacker, and John Hayes. Councilmember Snae explained to the committee that the NOPEC grant needed to be amended into the park capital budget. He went on to explain that it is used to upgrade and purchase city pool equipment, such as slides, pumps, permits, and freight cost. Total cost will be $17,346. Finally, Councilman Snae requested that this legislation be declared an emergency and suspension of council's three-ready rule, so equipment be ordered immediately and installed before summer. After no discussion from the committee, City Administrator Dutrow gave more background information to members of the chamber on what NOPEC is, how it is involved with our community, and for how the NOPEC grant is used. Councilman Jones made a motion to have Law Director Fowler draft legislation upon mayor's request number 24-10 and second by Councilman Herniman. The motion carried a passing three-to-zero vote. Mayor Wilkinson interjected regarding Kathy Kaufman's, city finance director, wanting to have a piece of legislation combined with number 24-10. Law Director Fowler explained to the mayor that Kathy's requests will be separated and assigned to a different committee. No further action needed at this time. The meeting was adjourned at 5:24 PM.
Thank you. Any questions on that report? Councilmember Herniman?
With the NOPEC grant, I think, well, when we went over that, it only covers the pumps, like the actual, like, the whole NOPEC grant is to, and City Administrator, you can chime in, is to, you know, lower the, it doesn't actually, the actual slide part is not involved, it's just the motor for the pumps, correct?
City Administrator?
So initially, our intention was to use the grant to purchase a new slide and new pumps. Some changes have occurred. We are just replacing the pumps with that grant. But in, in actuality, our initial intention when we presented the budget last year, that was our hope, was to be able to fund the whole project with that. But prices have changed, and unfortunately, the project has changed a little bit since then.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you. Streetside Walks and Sewers Committee, Councilmember Thacker?
No report, Madam President.
Thank you. And Economic Development and Downtown Planning, Councilmember Herniman?
No report, Madam President.
Thank you. Does anyone see the need to schedule committee of the whole meeting? We are now under reports of the officers. His honor, Mayor Lee Wilkinson.
Thank you, Madam President. As a reminder, we are planning a community cleanup before the April eclipse, and that should be coming on March 30th. Please keep a watch out for information and volunteer opportunities regarding that. Also, congratulations to Cassandra Emile. She won the $500 Shop Small Win Big Contest, just for shopping locally. Thank you also to TSEP in the chamber for helping sponsor that event and our anonymous donor, whoever that is. As a reminder, Aqua has plans to begin work to replace water lines starting as early as late February or early March on Madison Street, parts of Melmore Street, and parts of Miami Street, and we're getting really close to late February. The street sweeper is up and running, so if you see no parking signs pop up on cones along your street, pay attention to the dates and times on those. Try to get your cars moved off the street so the street sweeper can do its work. I believe it's going to be on Clay Street tomorrow. I have to move my cars off the street. Sewer work continues on Shandhart and will be moving to Main Street between Jefferson and Shandhart in the coming weeks, so be prepared for that. And I will now turn over the report to the Chamber of Commerce President, Bryce Riggs, to give us an update on what's happening with the Chamber and Destination Seneca County.
Good afternoon, Council. As Mayor Wilkinson said, my name is Bryce Riggs. I'm the Executive Director of the Seneca Regional Chamber in Destination Seneca County. I have a PowerPoint. It's out there somewhere. There it is. Perfect. All right. So every year we do our update with the Chamber Destination Seneca County. So specific, for tonight, I'll be talking about Destination Seneca County. Next slide, please. All right, a little bit of the team. First, I'll introduce, she's been with the organization for 28 years. She's our fearless leader, our voice of reason, and the one who keeps us all, keeps us all alive. Marissa has been with the organization, Director of Marketing, for about three years now, and moved back to Tiffin about three years ago, and we're happy to have her on the team. Judy DeZay, formerly Judy Smith, also owner of Painting and Bookstore, has been with the organization a little less than a year, and then I've been with the organization for about four years. We're, three of us are proud Heidelberg University alums, and then Marissa Kent State, so it is what it is. And Joni Elker is a longtime volunteer of the Chamber as well, and has put many, many, many years into making sure our organization is the best it can be. Excellent. So I thought, and talk real quickly about the Chamber. There's not a lot of chambers left in the state of Ohio that run their visitors bureaus, so I thought I'd talk a little quickly about, you know, who we are. We are proud to say that we are the Chamber of the Year for the state of Ohio this last year. We really support our membership, about 545 members throughout the county and beyond through our four points of education, relationships, resources, and savings and promotions. And really, this Venn diagram, it's very simple. I always say it's, you know, commerce, tourism, when they come together, it's the sweet spot, and that's where things are moving in the right direction. That's really what we try to do for our organization and our community, that there's a lot of opportunity for that collaboration between the two. And again, when they're all working on all cylinders, I think our community is in the best place. And then the visitors obviously are able to see the small businesses that we work with and are able to support them. Excellent. A little bit from this last year, we talked about, you know, our big, our big goal is that, you know, to provide as much as possible to our community, our visitors, from the Chamber's perspective, as well as Destination Seneca County, and then to compete at a high level. We are proud to say this, last year, we were first place winners of three awards in the Ruby Awards. It's what it's called from the Ohio Travel Association, and so it's from the official chip contest, which we'll talk about, the coloring book that Marissa put together, and then our features blog, and then we were, we were awarded citations of excellence in two different awards, and that's our Pizza Trail, the Slice of Seneca County. That's the Geocaching Trail, along with Be a Tourist in Your Own Town. Excellent. One of the things, when we renewed our contract with the county at this point, about four years ago, you know, the big thing from our, the county contract was, you know, really having transparency in tourism, which we strongly believe, we provide our financials to our tourism council. We meet on a quarterly basis, but really having an open door for feedback, for suggestions that we can all approve. Mayor Wilkinson serves on that committee. I know that other members of the administration, like Nick and Liz, have attended the meeting as the mayor's not able to be there at times throughout the year. But our big thing is that we take feedback in, we don't operate within a silo. They really sit underneath the Chamber Board of Trustees, but then provide us input and feedback. We are lucky that we have a member of our committee, the Council Denise Bell with the Seneca Caverns. She actually serves on our, on our Board of Trustees as well. So having that mix between Chamber and Tourism, I think, is extremely important in having that voice at the table. You can tell from this group, it's a very wide and ranging amount of folks from all these different areas throughout the county and beyond. And that's our big thing, is that, you know, getting a holistic approach of tourism, so we can best support everyone. Excellent. Talk, tell you a little about county lodging tax. We've seen, you know, quite an increase in the last number of years in lodging tax. This is the county, so it's the most holistic approach. From, you can see, every quarter we've had has actually outpaced. The one you won't see is that Q4 of this last year. We're still waiting on one more payment to come in. That's why it's not surpassed, but we've been pretty fortunate that our lodging tax salaries continue to increase. A lot of that has to do with the occupancy rates. We are seeing more and more people stay in our hotels, which is good to see. It's not unlikely to see a hotel sell out during the week, and then also some of our rates actually have increased over $200 a night at certain hotels, and it's always a good thing that people are obviously, you know, we set, the hotelier set the price, but when the community is able to pay it, or visitors pay that price, it shows that it's kind of in line with what people are willing to pay. Excellent. A little bit how we're funded as an organization. The Chamber is supported through our memberships, as well as sponsorships, and really Destination Seneca County is supported by lodging tax. So with that, basically, when people stay overnight, you know, that former Director John Dewey, that he used to say, heads and beds was extremely important, because they pay a lodging tax when they stay here. So the county commissioners' contract is a three-year contract. This last year, we were, we received a little over $165,000 in lodging tax, and then the city of Tiffin's $25,000, and it's consistent $25,000 on a yearly basis. Prior to you, we had a one-year contract about three years ago, and two years ago, and then last year, we also did a one-year contract for $25,000. And then we signed a contract with the city of Tiffin that really aligns with the county commissioners as well for a three-year contract for both entities, for the lodging tax, or at least a piece of that, which is really nice, and obviously allows us to budget. A lot of our initiatives are multi-year, and it allows us to really look at the long term of our organization and really some of where we want to go with it. Excellent. With that, I'm going to turn to Marissa. She's going to talk a little bit about how our four points with Destination Seneca County, and then we'll open up for questions after.
Awesome. Well, this is a little, okay, not that anybody usually has a problem hearing me, but I want to make sure I talk at least in the direction of the microphone. So thank you so much for having us tonight. Similar to how the Chamber was split into the four main points, and everything that we did strive to fit in one of those buckets. So as we looked at Destination Seneca County and the audiences that we were serving, we figured that it would be really helpful to help the public and also help drive our organization and everything that we do to also have buckets for Destination Seneca County. So the projects, the promotions, the initiatives and strategies that we come up with fall into relationships, marketing, leisure travel, and then group travel. And then, I know we've discussed this before, but most visitors bureaus, you have the word visitors in the title, and so that's what Destination Seneca County is considered. But we also tailor our audience not only to visitors and coming into Seneca County, but also getting residents to stay here in Seneca County and to experience the things that we have here. And the tourists in the own town that we spoke about was a direct product of that shift in audience, to be able to say, if you're staying here, you're spending money here, and then they're going out and serving as advocates to promote our community as a whole. So if you want to go next slide. So over the last year, in 2023, our big piece was that we really wanted to know what were we going to stand for, and what did we really want to drive home to people? So many years ago, it was the Seneca County Visitors Guide, and your next adventure begins here, which was great. It did begin in Seneca County, and so we, but we wanted to take that and spread it further. Not everyone relates to an adventure. Sometimes when people hear the word adventure, they run the opposite way, because they think it means outdoors, or you have to go hiking, or something like that. So we wanted to make it more broad and let visitors and residents alike know that whatever they were looking for, they could find a piece of that in Seneca County, whether it's history, whether it's they want to make memories with their family, whether they want to go on a staycation, or a couples retreat, whatever it may be. We wanted them to know that Seneca County was where they could find it. So that is when Seek Seneca County was born. So whether you're seeking shopping, or great food, or friends, or education, whatever it may be, Seneca County is a place to do that. So we have used that branding and that tagline, and hopefully we continue to use it far into the future, and from billboards to our community guide, and that's something that we'll continue to use throughout the different projects and promotions that go out. On the marketing front, one really big thing that we try to focus on is featuring the people and the stories of our community. So being able to show the faces and the feelings and the emotions behind the experiences that you'll have when you're here, or if you're a resident while you're staying here. So on social media, across our different platforms, we reach 2.8 million users. So that's an 11% increase from 2022 to the 2023 year. And then website visitors, we really wanted to be a resource and a place where people can go, figure out what there is to do, figure out where they can stay at, where they can eat, and have this one-stop shop for them that's very easy to use. So about two years ago, we went over a complete overhaul of the website, and this past year, we saw 113,000 users of our website, and that's up 7% from the previous year. So it's always good to see those numbers continue to increase, even after a large spike when something's brand new and redone. And it's showing that we're consistently staying top of mind to those who are seeking things that they can do in Seneca County. Along the bottom, you'll also see some pictures, so it's making sure that we're at events and that we're telling the stories through the faces and the feelings. So the Heritage Festival, our coloring book, you'll see Linda there in the Sites of Seneca County trip contest and involving the public, and then being able to continue to be out and active and let people know that not only are we a resource, but we're also a support for them as well. Next slide. Sorry, I didn't, I don't, I should have, like, said it, not like, I, I don't know what I was doing. Sorry. Also, along the lines of marketing, we really want to highlight our assets. So there's some places, if you think about a lake Erie, which is an amazing place to be, and there's so much to do, and it's because they have the lake there. It's, no matter what happens, or no matter what they do, people are going to continue to go to that place, because it has something that people want to see. So on, in Seneca County, we have amazing things, but sometimes you have to take them and repackage them and tell the story differently, so people know that this is where they should come and visit or stay. And so we have really focused on taking the assets that we have and being able to promote them out. So for example, we saw a lot of people asking, where's the best place to go look at holiday lights? Or where can I drive to? Or I don't want to get on my car. And when the Ohio, State of Ohio Department of Development reached out and asked if the community had any drive-through light experiences, usually, a lot of times, you obviously see places like the Toledo Zoo, or Columbus Zoo, and things like that. And so this year, we actually had the Seneca County Fair Family Lights Experience that was included on the State of Ohio Holiday Lights Trail. So being able to take what we have and making sure that their voices and their offerings are amplified to a larger stage. And then we also took the different addresses that people were listing and asked them to submit if they had a really decorated house, put together their addresses in a Google Maps, where they could just click Go, and it took them all over the county for the Holiday Lights House Trail. So this is something that previous Mayor Monks did. We had, he was no longer doing it, so he asked if we could pick up the ball where it left off, and he was more than happy to help with that. So those are just two examples of taking what we have right here in Seneca County and making sure people know about them. We've also been working very diligently on making sure we're seen not only on a statewide stage, but also on a national stage. So later, we'll talk about the elope at the eclipse and our eclipse programming that was seen on national news. It's about involving all parts of the community, whether it's the elementary schools for the community project, if it's couples that we can get their voices heard that are partaking in different activities, new businesses opening that are going to be large tourist attractions. It's making sure that through our marketing efforts, it's not just promoting Seneca County, but the businesses and the people that make up it. Next slide. Sorry, I just, like, I will nod better next time, so. For relationships, we know that the things that we want to accomplish and hope to accomplish are not done alone. So through the community, we try to be as actively involved as possible with both the city of Tiffin, those different organizations, also on the county-wide organization, and then on the statewide stage as well. So we're active members of the Ohio Travel Association. This year, Bryce and I actually serve as co-chairs for the membership committee for that. We also belong to the Ohio Association of Conventions and Visitors Bureaus. There's one thing in the tourism industry, they really love acronyms, so OACBB is that one. We also belong to Visit Northwest Ohio, so those are different organizations within the region trying to work together and working on that collaboration over competition piece, and then also being actively involved in the different initiatives and programs that the state of Ohio is working on, as last year, they rebranded to the Heart of It All, and being able to partake in those different programs, whether it was through the Holiday Lights, the Eclipse that they reached out and put together, too. Next slide. For leisure travel, this is an area that if you build it, they will come, really rings true. So getting people that are, want to come, but want to explore things at their own pace and be able to schedule it on their schedule. So a couple years ago, you may remember, we launched the first geocaching trail in Northwest Ohio, the Seneca County Geo Trail, and that was super successful. And so when we came up with Slice of Seneca County, which would be a pizza and a geocaching trail in one, we did not expect to see the success that we have, but we're excited that it has really taken off and brought people from all over the country, more than 80,000 miles traveled at this point, to complete these trails. And not only is it getting them in Seneca County, they're driving around finding the geocaches, but they're also doing the pizza side portion, which is supporting our local businesses. So we are lucky to have partnered with the Hampton Inn on that, lots of different local businesses and organizations that have been welcoming people with open arms to host a cache, or answer their questions, whatever that may be. We've also had some geocaching vloggers in town, influencers, and then also seen our local residents out and about, which is great. We also, most recently, helped to promote and get together the first-ever Seneca County Restaurant Week. So again, taking those resources and assets that we already have and making it easier for people to get in the door into these businesses and learn about them. So Seneca County Restaurant Week was, had over 23 participating restaurants for the first time, and we had over 200 people who went in and participated off Restaurant Week menus and filled out the form. And it happened to be the coldest week of the year. So that was when it was freezing everywhere. So we heard from a few restaurants that they wouldn't have seen customers that week unless it was Restaurant Week, and that's what people were coming in for. So that really hit home that what we're doing is working and supporting tourism and that commerce piece. And also among leisure travel, we also sit on different committees and help with the promotion of special events that may be taking place, or big programs at certain organizations, whatever it may be. We want to make sure we're there to support. Next slide. Also on leisure travel, it's, we're going, that's all things that are happening right here in our community, but we're also going out into the community and beyond. So every year, we set up at the Fostoria Rail Festival as a resource and hand out community guides and coloring books. We help to sponsor the Fostoria Farmers Markets. And if you check the radar and it looks like it might rain, don't listen to Bryce when he says you don't need a tent. So I'm super thankful for Judy sticking it out on that one with me. And then also participating in statewide initiatives such as Tourism Day or Tourism Lobbying Day to make sure that leisure travel is accessible for all people to get here to our community. Next slide. And last but not least, we have group travel. So this is what you traditionally would consider bus travel. We love having bus traffic in Seneca County. Many believe that it is a healthy sign of tourism in the area. So usually buses have anywhere from 35 to 65 individuals, usually in the senior and retired market. And so we love having them. We take them to different businesses, different experiences, and really offer these behind-the-scenes excursions that they wouldn't get if they came here on their own. And with bus traffic, not only is it a great economic impact on those organizations, but it also allows these folks to come here, see what Seneca County is about, and then come back in the leisure travel side and be able to return and do things at their own pace. So we had So we had six buses last year, and we already have three scheduled for this year so far. We also had a couple of different groups that we got in touch with, either through the different museums, or different organizations that knew groups were coming, and then they sent them our direction. So we were able to connect with them and make it a good experience. So for example, the Antique Car Group came into town and ate at the Mexican restaurant, and we met them in the parking lot and gave them all chips, so they were super happy for that. And it's about adding those special little touches and making those moments that they'll remember for a long time to come. Next slide. Also on group travel, we're getting out as much as we can and making sure we're connecting with those different industry leaders and our different partners. So every year we're invited, the last two years we've been invited to the Great Day Tours Marketplace Show, which is by invite only, and that is where we see a lot of return organizations coming back to Seneca County. And then this is a picture from Heartland last year, so that is through the Ohio Travel Association, and we'll actually be heading there in a week and a half. It's in South Bend and in Indiana this year. So making sure that we're getting out and promoting that message of Seek Seneca County. Next slide. And then I will pass it over to Bryce.
Well, I should note, when we do the group travel and a lot of the travel that we help with, is we really, they call us, we help facilitate, so we'll set up, for example, different meetings and whatnot. 13 ABC called yesterday, for example, and said, hey, we're trying to get into the Silver Museum, but then I opened, yes, we're able to get them a story for next week, and then they're also going to do the Glass Museum while they're here. So really working with our partners to ensure that's an easy process for both visitor, as well as for them as well, as Marissa touched on a little bit. The Solar Eclipse is coming up here sooner than, sooner than we think, if we like it or not, April 8th. So a couple of different things that we're helping out, kind of two fronts. One is our community standpoint, and so we have an Eclipse Insights event coming up here next Monday. And so we have different sessions at 9 o'clock, at 1 o'clock, and at 5:30 PM throughout the county, so Tiffin, Fostoria, and then Attica. We're bringing our different business partners together, we're having EMA, it'll be us, it'll be Health Department, it'll be Fostoria Economic Development, TSEP Downtown, and Fostoria Chamber, all these partners coming together, truly to answer these questions, because we did some sessions at the end of last year, and a lot of people said, that's not until next year, that's not until next year. Well, we're here, and so we have 140-plus people signed up for that event on next Monday, just to give them information, because our biggest thing is if we educate, we're hoping that it's a good experience for our visitors, because our community knows, hey, they're coming, this is why they're here, let's make it a good experience. We're also working hand-in-hand with our partners in terms of events and whatnot. And the first is we, the Out of the Dark 5K Fun Run, and so we reached out to the YMCA is a good partner for that, and then we reached out to Mercy Health, kind of brought them together, and so that'll be taking place that Saturday night. So it's going to be a fun event, kind of running through Hightower University's athletic facilities, through their lights, so you'll be running literally into the dark, out of the dark, and it'll be a lot of fun. We're also doing the Bingo, so that will kind of coincide with the community guide that'll be released right before that, the 2024 Seneca County Community Guide that we put out every year. So allow community to do members, along with visitors, to kind of go throughout the county, to visit different businesses, and once they check it off, they'll submit it, and we'll basically send out gift cards for folks who submit, and kind of, again, more of the leisure travel. And then obviously the elope at the eclipse has really taken off. Before I came here today, we were at 99 weddings, and then it's like primarily 60/30 in terms of what it looks, 60/40 in terms of what it looks like in terms of weddings, and then also renewals. We've 11,000-plus miles traveling to Seneca County for the wedding, so it's kind of a cool thing. It'll be East Green Amphitheater, and then now we've reserved the Chandelier as a space where we'll do the cake, and then we'll do the first toast. And I want to thank Don in the downtown for helping support with Paul Grover for the music, but it's been a lot of fun. I had a mom call me today, and she said, my daughter's not giving me enough details about this event. Will I see her get married? When will I see her get married? And so Marissa and I both have weddings this year, and I basically do it.
Not to each other.
Not to each other, right?
Not to each other.
Not on April 8th either. I should just claim that I've done a little more wedding planning than I wanted to already. So that's really taken off. And then the biggest thing too, I would say, the property and owner standpoint, our hotels have officially sold out. Hampton Inn was the last one to go, and this end of last week they sold out officially. So it's working with our landowners in terms of property rights and making sure that they go through the Health Department, so working hand-in-hand with them. So that was Kip Kiefer in 13 ABC, we've had Copper Mayor's been on, we've had a few other entities that have talked about their properties, and then obviously this, everyone's got swag, which is a cool thing, right? Because we're in the path of totality, and so we're doing kind of features along the way, and we'll have a shop up, we have a shop up on our website, where people can see all the swag that exists within the county, where to buy, and everyone's kind of have their unique approach. And then Marissa's going to talk about the bicentennial, and we'll pull it up.
And then, next slide, please, thank you. Also this year, in addition to the eclipse, is Seneca County's bicentennial. So two years ago, we were fortunate enough to be a part of Tiffin's bicentennial, and this year we sit on the committee, a committee to celebrate the whole county. So we are assisting with different events. The kickoff for that is actually on April 1st at the Seneca County Museum, and celebrating all things Seneca County, its history, and then also its future, far, far into the future of excitement that we have. So things like the Heritage Festival, there'll be a beard contest, we've themed the Be a Tourist in Your Own Town event around the bicentennial, and then also there's a canine commissioner contest as well. So if you think you have a very commissioner studious dog, you can submit that, yeah, so. So, and we want to thank both on the eclipse side, and then also on the bicentennial side, our partners, so with the eclipse, we are so thankful to the city for providing funding behind that, to be able to help put on these awesome events that attract people here. We are fortunate enough to be one of the communities in totality, but how can we make sure we're the community that people are coming to, staying the night, and spending their time, and getting married, and hopefully they'll come back for all their anniversaries, and maybe not all at once, but they'll be here in that timeframe. And we also want to thank the Seneca County Commissioners for providing funding behind the bicentennial to make these different events and initiatives happen. They'll also have a historical driving tour that will launch April 1st as well. And then next slide. And that is all we have for you this evening. I know it probably was a lot all at once, but you also should have received the official year-end review for Destination Seneca County. This is something that we did for the first time, that we hope to continue to do. That way we can really show the things that have been accomplished in the last year. But we want to say thank you for your continuous support and for allowing us to tell people about how great Seneca County is. Any questions?
I don't have a question, I'd just like to comment to say, like, you guys have obviously done an incredible job, and so please keep up the good work, and thank you for everything that you guys have, all of your time and efforts. I know it's not easy, that's a lot of events that you guys are spending a lot of time at, all of you, and to support that, so thank you. It's obviously been very successful.
Do you want to thank our team, because I always say that's the X-factor, right? Every organization, we go to things, and people say, I like that idea, we'll take that from you, and I'm like, great, I don't, we don't really care, because then the day you can't reproduce this team. This team cares about our community, they're passionate about where we're going, and what our community has going on, and that's the biggest thing that makes, makes the difference, is that they come to work every day, thinking, how can we make our community the best place to live, work, play, and visit?
Absolutely. Does anyone have any questions?
And I appreciate all the cooperation and collaboration you do with the city, county, and TSEP, to get all these events going and to, you know, make things happen in Seneca County.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, guys.
And that concludes my report, Madam President.
Right, Clerk of Counsel, Ann Porras.
No report, Madam President.
Director of Finance, Kathy Kaufman.
Thank you, Madam President. I wanted to say a few words of explanation about ordinances 24-8 and 24-9. They're both up for third reading tonight, so you'll be voting on them. 24-8, that is for an OPWC loan for street paving that is going to be due this summer. Didn't need to suspend it, because I knew we had plenty of time. At the time that I prepared the budget, I thought that the payment was going to be $31,250, so that's what I appropriated. Then I got different information later on, that the payment's going to be $50,000. So this is appropriating the difference, so that we have the correct amount appropriated. And I'm also asking that you approve the transfer from 215 over to the fund 415, where I actually will be making the payment from. So it's appropriating funds, and then also approving a transfer for that one. And then 24-9 is a third reading also, and this is for continuation insurance coverage. It's something that we always have in the budget, we never really know how many people will elect for this coverage. So I have a certain amount in the budget, and I put that in there every year. We actually have a few more people on there, sometimes we don't have anybody that elects this coverage. We have more than one this time, so we're appropriating more funds there, because we will not have enough if everyone stays on it for the whole entire year. So we're just putting more money in there to make sure that we have enough to cover everything. Does anyone have any questions?
Makes sense to me, I don't have any questions, thank you.
Okay. So I also have the January financial report for you. So for January 2024, total receipts for the month were $5,099,547.55. Total expenses for the month were $4,985,099.6. General fund unencumbered balance was $4,072,81.7. Income tax receipts for January 2024 were $1,189,827.16. The total annual increase in income tax receipts through January 2024 when compared to January 2023 is $42,709.48, which is 3.2% increase year-to-date. The 0.25% portion of income tax receipts that was transferred into Fund 215 for Public Streets for January 2024 is $146,557.31. The unexpendable balance for all funds is $38,512,839.48, which is the same as the bank balances for the same time period. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Reesner.
I move to accept the Finance Director's report and bank reconciliation for month ending January 2024.
Thank you, there's a motion to accept the Finance Director's report and the bank reconciliation for the month of January, is there a second? Councilmember Snay.
I second that.
Thank you, there's, thank you, there's a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The motion carries. Director of Law, Zach Fowler.
No report, Madam President.
Okay, thank you, I'm glad I got your name right.
Yep.
All right. You're now under written communications.
We have Mayor's Request for Legislation Number 24-13, Approval of Rod Morrison's Reappointment to the Planning Commission.
Thank you, Mayor's Request for Legislation Number 24-13 will be assigned to the Personnel and Labor Relations Committee.
Mayor's Request for Legislation Number 24-14, City Lot Number Two Lighting.
Mayor's Request for Legislation Number 24-14 will be assigned to the Street Sidewalks and Sewers Committee.
And Finance Director's Request for Legislation Number F24-13, To amend the 2024 Budget Ordinance 23-94, To appropriate funds into the fire claims escrow budget.
Finance Director's Request for Legislation Number F24-13 is prepared tonight as Ordinance 24-21.
And that concludes the written communication.
Thank you, any, we are now under oral communications, anyone wishing to address counsel may step to the podium, sign in, and direct their questions to myself. Thank you, we are now under motions, are there any motions this evening? Thank you, we are now under resolutions and ordinances.
Resolution Number 2024-24, Introduced by Cheyenne Thacker, A Resolution Authorizing the City Administrator to Prepare and Submit an Application to Participate in the Urban Waters Federal Partnership Tree Planning Grant to Execute Contracts as Required and Declaring an Emergency.
Thank you, this is the second reading of Resolution 24-24.
Resolution Number 2024-25, Introduced by John Kahler, Resolution Approving Mayor's Appointment to the City, of the City Administrator, to Attend the Seneca County General Health District Annual Meeting as Proxy for the Mayor and Declaring an Emergency.
Thank you, this is the first reading of Resolution 24-25. Councilmember Kahler.
Madam President, I move to pass Resolution 24, 2024-25, Suspending Council's Three-Reading Rule.
Thank you, there's a motion for suspension of Council's Three-Reading Rule and Immediate Passage of Resolution 24-25, is there a second? Councilmember Thacker.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you, there's a motion and a second, is there any discussion? Councilmember Thacker.
We need somebody to attend on the city's behalf, because the mayor will actually be here at our council meeting, so Nick is a great choice.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Hey, seeing none, we will first vote on the suspension.
Councilmember Jones.
Yes.
Reesner.
Yes.
Snay.
Yes.
Thacker.
Yes.
Herniman.
Yes.
Kahler.
Yes.
Suspension passes with a vote of 6 to 0, will now vote on the emergency.
Councilmember Jones.
Yes.
Reesner.
Yes.
Snay.
Yes.
Thacker.
Yes.
Herniman.
Yes.
Kahler.
Yes.
Emergency passes with a vote of 6 to 0, will now vote on the passage.
Councilmember Jones.
Yes.
Reesner.
Yes.
Snay.
Yes.
Thacker.
Yes.
Herniman.
Yes.
And Kahler.
Yes.
Resolution 24-25 passes with a vote of 6 to 0.
Resolution Number 2024-26, Introduced by John Kahler, A Resolution Approving Mayor's Appointment of Don Iannatuno to Serve an Unexpired Term on the Zoning Board of Appeals from the Date of this Signed Resolution Through December 31, 2025.
Thank you, this is the first reading of Resolution 24-26. Councilmember Kahler.
Madam President, I move to pass Resolution 20, 2024-26, Approving the Mayor's Appointment of Don Iannatuno to Serve an Unexpired Term on the Zoning Board of Appeals from the Date of this Signed Resolution Through December 31, 2025.
Thank you. I'll summarize, there's a motion for passage of Resolution 24-26, is there a second? Councilmember Reesner.
I second.
Thank you, there's a motion and a second, any discussion? Okay, seeing none, we will now vote on the passage.
Councilmember Jones.
Yes.
Reesner.
Yes.
Snay.
Yes.
Thacker.
Yes.
Herniman.
Yes.
And Kahler.
Yes.
Resolution 24-26 passes with a vote of 6 to 0.
Ordinance Number 2024-4, Introduced by Cheyenne Thacker, An Ordinance Authorizing Participation in the ODOT Road Salt Contracts Awarded, or the City Administrator to Competitively Bid for the Purchase of Road Salt.
Thank you, this is the third reading of Ordinance 24-4. Councilmember Thacker.
I move for passage of Ordinance 2024-4.
Thank you, there's a motion for passage of Ordinance 24-4, is there a second? Councilmember, Councilmember Herniman.
I'll second that, Madam President.
Thank you, there's a motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, we will vote on the passage.
Councilmember Jones.
Yes.
Reesner.
Yes.
Snay.
Yes.
Thacker.
Yes.
Herniman.
Yes.
Kahler.
Yes.
Ordinance 24-4 passes with a vote of 6 to 0.
Ordinance Number 2024-8, Introduced by Kevin Reesner, An Ordinance Amending the 2024 Budget Ordinance 23-94, To Appropriate $18,750 Into the Quarter Percent Income Tax Public Streets Fund, And Approve a Transfer From the Quarter Percent Income Tax Public Streets Fund to the OPWC Loan Street Paving Fund.
Thank you, this is the third reading of Ordinance 24-8. Councilmember Reesner.
Thank you, Madam President, I move for passage of Ordinance 24-8.
Thank you, there is a motion for passage of Ordinance 24-8, is there a second? Councilmember Herniman.
I'll second.
Thank you, there's a motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, we will vote on the passage.
Councilmember Jones.
Yes.
Reesner.
Yes.
Snay.
Yes.
Thacker.
Yes.
Herniman.
Yes.
Kahler. Kahler.
Yes.
Ordinance 24-8 passes with a vote of 6 to 0.
Ordinance Number 2024-9, Introduced by Kevin Reisner, An Ordinance Amending the 2024 Budget Ordinance 23-94, To Appropriate $25,000 Into the General Administration Budget.
Thank you. This is the third reading of Ordinance 24-9. Councilmember Reisner.
Thank you, Madam President. I move for passage of Ordinance 24-9.
Thank you. There is a motion for passage of Ordinance 24-9. Is there a second? Councilmember Thacker.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you. There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Okay, seeing none, we will vote on the passage.
Councilmember Jones.
Yes.
Reisner.
Yes.
Snay.
Yes.
Thacker.
Yes.
Herniman.
Yes.
And Kahler.
Yes.
Ordinance 24-9 passes with a vote of 6 to 0.
Ordinance Number 2024-11, Introduced by Cheyenne Thacker, An Ordinance Authorizing and Directing the City Administrator to Prepare Plans and Specifications, Advertise For and Receive Bids, and Recommend and Execute a Contract for the West Market Street and Hopewell Avenue Traffic Signal Repair Project.
Thank you. This is the third reading of Ordinance 24-11. Councilmember Thacker.
I move for passage of Ordinance 2024-11.
Thank you. There's a motion for passage of Ordinance 24-11. Is there a second? Councilmember Reisner.
I'll second, Madam President.
Thank you. There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Councilmember Reisner.
I believe we're going to get insurance reimbursement for this. I just wanted to mention that before we vote on this. Right, right, Nick?
Thank you. Any other discussion? Okay, seeing none, we will vote on the passage.
Councilmember Jones.
Yes.
Reisner.
Yes.
Snay.
Yes.
Thacker.
Yes.
Herniman.
Yes.
And Kahler.
Yes.
Ordinance 24-11 passes with a vote of 6 to 0.
Ordinance Number 2024-13, Introduced by Cheyenne Thacker, An Ordinance Enacting Section 139.07 of the Tiffin Codified Ordinances, Authorizing the City Administrator to Maintain a File for Pre-Qualifications of Professional Design Firms.
Thank you. This is the second reading of Ordinance 24-13.
Ordinance Number 2024-14, Introduced by Kevin Reisner, An Ordinance Amending the 2024 Budget Ordinance 23-94, To Reallocate $15,000 Into the Quarter Percent Income Tax Public Streets Budget.
Thank you. This is the second reading of Ordinance 24-14. Councilmember Reisner.
Thank you, Madam President. I move for immediate passage of Ordinance 24-14, Suspending City Council's Three-Reading Rule.
Thank you. There is a motion for suspension of Council's Three-Reading Rule and passage of Ordinance 24-14. Is there a second? Councilmember Jones.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you. There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, we will first vote on the suspension.
Councilmember Jones.
Yes.
Reisner.
Yes.
Snay.
Yes.
Thacker.
Yes.
Herniman.
Yes.
And Kahler.
Yes.
Suspension passes with a vote of 6 to 0. We'll now vote on the passage.
Councilmember Jones.
Yes.
Reisner.
Yes.
Snay.
Yes.
Thacker.
Yes.
Herniman.
Yes.
And Kahler.
Yes.
Resolution 24-14 passes with a vote of 6 to 0.
Ordinance Number 2024-15, Introduced by Kevin Reisner, An Ordinance Amending the 2024 Budget Ordinance 23-94, To Appropriate Funds Into the CSO 24 and 30, Benner Interceptor, Federal Urban, Paving, and OPWC Funds, And Approve the Return of the Advances to the Sewer and General Funds.
Thank you. This is the second reading of Ordinance 24-17.
Ordinance Number 2024-19, Introduced by Kevin Reisner, An Ordinance Amending the 2024 Budget Ordinance 23-94, To Appropriate $2,000 Into the Park Department Budget.
Thank you. This is the second reading of Ordinance 24-19.
Ordinance Number 2024-20, Introduced by Dennis Snay, An Ordinance Authorizing All Actions Necessary to Accept the Northeast Ohio Public Energy Council, NOPEC, 2024 Energized Community Grant, and Declaring an Emergency.
Thank you. This is the first reading of Ordinance 24-20. Councilmember Snay.
Thank you, Madam President. I move for immediate passage of Ordinance 24-20. It asks Council to spread the three-reading rule.
Thank you. There is a motion for suspension of Council's Three-Reading Rule and immediate passage of Ordinance 24-20. Is there a second? Councilmember Thacker.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you. There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Councilmember Thacker.
Basically, we want to suspend it so that we can order the parts in time to make sure that the pool is ready to go by summer.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Okay, we will first vote on the suspension.
Councilmember Jones.
Yes.
Reisner.
Yes.
Snay.
Yes.
Thacker.
Yes.
Herniman.
Yes.
And Kahler.
Yes.
Suspension passes with a vote of 6 to 0. We'll now vote on the emergency.
Councilmember Jones.
Yes.
Reisner.
Yes.
Snay.
Yes.
Thacker.
Yes.
Herniman.
Yes.
And Kahler.
Yes.
Emergency passes with a vote of 6 to 0. We'll now vote on the passage.
Councilmember Jones.
Yes.
Reisner.
Yes.
Snay.
Yes.
Thacker.
Yes.
Herniman.
Yes.
And Kahler.
Yes.
Ordinance 24-20 passes with a vote of 6 to 0.
Ordinance Number 2024-21, Introduced by Kevin Reisner, An Ordinance Amending the 2024 Budget Ordinance 23-94, To Appropriate $30,000 Into the Fire Claims Escrow Budget.
Thank you. This is the first reading of Ordinance 24-21. Councilmember Reisner.
Thank you, Madam President. I move for immediate passage of Ordinance 24-21, Suspending City Council's Reading Rule.
Thank you. There's a motion for passage of Ordinance 24-21, Suspending Council's Three-Reading Rules. Is there a second? Councilmember Snay.
I second that motion.
Thank you. There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Councilmember Reisner.
This is for the insurance money check for the fire department.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Okay, seeing none, we'll first vote on the suspension.
Councilmember Jones.
Yes.
Reisner.
Yes.
Snay.
Yes.
Thacker.
Yes.
Herniman.
Yes.
And Kahler.
Yes.
Ordinance 24-21 passes with a vote of 6 to 0.
That concludes the legislation, Madam President.
Thank you. We are now under other business. Councilmember Thacker.
I would like to move to have the law director draft the legislation for Mayor's Request for Legislation 24-14. This is regarding the city lot two lighting. Kind of seems like it's already in motion anyway. And making that parking lot safer, I think, is all in our best interest to get it done quickly and rectify, you know, what's already happened. So.